I'd like to call the, uh, the Board of Education meeting to order. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence. You can pray, you can do whatever you want to do at this time. Amen. At this time, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the, uh, to the Lee County Board of Education meeting tonight. I don't know if we have any public comment, uh, Mrs. Superintendent? Okay, we have none. So at this time, uh, I also want to, uh, do a vision. At this time, I will ask, uh, Dr. Kobu to read that one.
Lee County Schools in partnership with the community will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovations, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
Thank you. Ms. Bowman?
Yes, I have the Code of Ethics for School Board Members in Policy 2120. The Board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the Board must adhere to an accepted Code of Ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflict of interest as we handle the work of the Board. Avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the Board. Avoid the misuse of public funds, avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts, and avoid making confidential information public. The Board accepts the Code of Ethics established by the North Carolina School Boards Association.
Thank you. At this time, I want to welcome the press call and all the guests here. Noah Grant from Sanford Herald, and we have a, an intern from, uh, uh, the radio station. What's your name? Nice to meet you. Uh, and every one of you here, you are special guests and we recognize you and thank you for coming to our meeting tonight. At this time, um, I would like to have a, a motion for the approval of the agenda for 7:10.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion. We approve the agenda as presented.
Will you do the second?
Second.
We have a, a, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is approved. Uh, the approval of the minutes of 6:12, 2018, 6:19, 2018, and 6:29, 2018.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the minutes of June 12th, 2018, June 19th, 2018, and June 29th, 2018.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. At this time, I just want to, uh, share the Chairman's report, uh, with every one of us. Um, since our school is on holiday, we have some programs going on, uh, at the school system. Uh, we have a, a summer program. We have, uh, kaleidoscope kids that went to Washington DC, and some went to summer school. We have summer graduation also. And, uh, also I want to, uh, uh, tell us about the students who are having college visit at this time. We have, uh, students that the school system arranged to take them on a college visit. This is for kids who come from less privileged homes who otherwise would not have parents to drive them to their, to, to colleges. They are from grades, uh, 10 to 12, and the school is, uh, bearing the, uh, cost of taking them around and exposing them to college education. So, at this time, uh, I, and we also have a retreat at the, uh, end of the month, uh, 31st of the, of the month.
Mr. Chair, you break me the...
Yes, yes, you go ahead.
Two, two things. Um, one, accountability update. Begin our official results from the state. Be announced at the very beginning of September. Um, we'll be anxiously awaiting that. And I do also have a question for the Board, um, going back to, uh, Mr. Akonesho's comment, uh, about the retreat. Um, um, I can work through whatever I need to work through. Um, but I would be, I'm wondering if the Board would be willing to move it to the 30th instead of the 31st. If it's a problem, we'll just keep it where it is, but...
Anybody have a problem with that day or...
I don't want to inconvenience anybody.
I teach a class, um, on Mondays from 9:00 to 11:40 if we moved it to the afternoon, 12:00 to 3:00.
We will just keep it.
Okay, I teach one over at CC.
Okay, we'll, we'll keep it where it is.
Okay.
If they weren't giving final speeches, I might could work something out, but they'll be giving pretty important speeches that day.
Understood.
Okay.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, we have, uh, the Chairman's report and the Superintendent's report. Uh, at this time, um, curriculum and instruction, I don't know if you have any report, uh, Dr. Kobu said no report. We know school is on vacation. And, uh, facility and technology, uh, Dr. Smee.
Yes. You, you're gonna skip Mrs. Bowman.
No, F and T is...
F and T.
Before me.
Uh, okay.
This is so... This is summertime.
Uh, the F and T committee met, met on June 26th, and we did have a, a number of items. Uh, seems we have a surplus of, of football helmets and shoulder pads, and it was a con- consensus of the committee to approve the, uh, shoulder pad surplus resolution, which in fact, uh, we will be giving those, uh, that equipment to the county commissioners who in turn will redistribute. Am I not working? Can you hear me, Rob?
Yes.
Who will, uh, distribute to Parks and Recreation, uh, for, uh, repurposing, uh, with, with the county, uh, Recreation Department. Uh, the, the, the committee also approved, uh, uh, the sale of the, uh, Carbon Tree House, uh, project at, uh, Southern Lee High School. That will, uh, will be placed, it's on our consent agenda, and, uh, again, it will be sold at, uh, public auction. We also look at, at a, uh, addition to the YMCA license agreement, and it was a com- uh, consensus of the committee to approve that license agreement, and, uh, there are a couple of nice additions. Uh, the YMCA is gonna start a program at, uh, Deep River School, which we have not had before, and they're also gonna, uh, provide busing from students from San Lee High School to Bullock. So, two nice additions for our after-school, uh, programs. We also approved, uh, door replacements at our East Lee and Wesley Middle Schools. Those schools are now some 25-plus years of age, and we approved a contract in the amount of $189,778. Uh, this money will come from the lottery funds, and, uh, they obviously, uh, will be nice safety improvements for our middle schools. Uh, we also approved the school messenger cell face contract extension. Uh, this is a system that we have that audits incoming and outgoing emails from all of our students, uh, to make sure that it's done in a safe and orderly fashion. Uh, the committee also approved, uh, naming our new elementary school, and, uh, the committee recommended naming the school WB Wicker Elementary School. Uh, it recommended, uh, the colors be navy and old gold, and the mascot will be Tigers. Uh, we had a brief update on, uh, the WB Wicker School pro- uh, proj- uh, project and, uh, from the superintendent, and it seems that the contractor feels good about the progress. And, uh, there being no further business, our next meeting will be on Tuesday, the 28th, uh, of, uh, September at 4:00 PM on the, uh, second floor conference room.
Okay.
And that concludes my, uh...
Facility and technology, yes. At this time, I wa- I want you to do your finance too.
Uh, the Finance Committee met on, uh, June 26th, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the first item on our agen- on our agenda was a school board attorney's contract, and we approved renewing, uh, extending that contract from July 1st to December 31st, 2019, with all the same compensations as this current year. Not to exceed $129,000, including bond forfeiture's hearing.
Okay.
A second item was a budget resolution, a member for 2017-18. Uh, we were reviewed the budget resolution and recommended to continue the resolution to make adjustments, and, uh, which will be presented, fact is you have a copy of that resolution in, in front of you this evening. We then looked at the 2018-2019 continuing budget resolution, which authorizes appropriation for usual and customary expenditures not to exceed 85% of the 2017-18 school year appropriations. This resolution will become effective July 1st, 2018, and remain in effect until formal adoption of a formal budget for the 2018, uh, school year. We also renewed our workman's compensation policy. Uh, we are, are gonna use the same carrier. The premium has gone up slightly, uh, because of rate, rate in, uh, rate increase from the Suri Insurance Company. Uh, the Board expense, uh, for, uh, expense report was shared. Uh, our next meeting will be Tuesday, the 28th of August at 5:00 at, at the Heinz Building. And that concludes, uh, the Finance Committee report, Mr. Gen- Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We go to our policy at this time. Ms. Bowman?
Mr. Chair, the Policy Committee did not meet, uh, since our last meeting. However, we do still have on for unfinished business, the Policy 3410, uh, with the, it will be on for second reading this evening.
Okay. At this time, um, that concludes our, our committee reports. At this time, we'll move, uh, to the consent agenda, like, uh, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to move line item 10 from the consent agenda.
We, uh, it's a consent agenda. It comes from the committee.
The consent agenda comes from what committee?
From, from the committee. Once it comes from the committee, uh, the consent agenda comes from the committee. It's how you have to have a, a motion to remove it, so you have to...
Well, uh, according to Robert Schulz's order, it only require, it doesn't require a vote. It requires any Board member to request it be taken from the consent agenda, sir.
No, you have to have a second.
Well, I would like to make a motion that line item number 10 be removed from the consent agenda, be moved for discussion for the Board, sir.
Are you moving to place it under new business?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll second that.
Okay. Do we have a counter motion since it's coming from the committee?
It can simply be moved. I mean, it's still gonna be cons- it's still gonna be before the Board. It's just a matter of discussion.
Yeah, we, we know that. So, what we're going to do right now is, uh, we'll move forward. Let's go ahead and, uh, approve the, uh, consent agenda, removing, uh, number 10.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion. We approve items 1 through 9 on the consent agenda with the exclusion of 10.
Second.
Okay, second. Okay? At this time, uh, we go to the, uh, unfinished business.
You gotta have a vote on that, Mr. Chair. Still have to vote on the consent agenda, sir.
Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we move forward. At this time, we move to the unfinished business. I've never had anything moved from the consent agenda before, so it's a little confusing, yeah.
Understand.
Okay?
And I'm, my thing doesn't wanna click. So, uh, Ms. Chair, we move to approve Board Policy 3410 upon second reading.
Okay. You go ahead.
That was the motion.
Yes, we need a second.
It comes from committee. It's on, already on for second reading.
That's why I say you, you go ahead.
Okay. That was the motion on the unfinished business.
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. That's it?
Mm-hmm.
The next, uh, the next thing is on that, number three, uh, new elementary school, uh, name and mascot. It's coming from the committee too, but we need a motion.
Sir, I would just, I just have a question, point of information, please. It's not anything against it. I would just like to know, according to our policy, we have a committee for the name process, and my only concern is, did we get the WB Wicker alumni involved in the decision-making for, but the color? I found the colors and the mascots were the same, and then, I mean, the colors and the names the same, but I couldn't find the mascot in the history book, and I was just curious if they had...
We did seek their, we did seek their input on that with colors and tiger as the mascot.
And it, and in fact, uh, Ms. Womack, I canvassed, um, the county commissioners and, uh, members of the community before I, uh, before the committee meeting. So I think I was pretty well, community was pretty well canvassed before it got to the committee.
Okay. Is your question answered?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this time, uh, I'd like a motion to approve, uh, the name and the mascot.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve that WB Wicker, being named WB Wicker with the mascot of the Tigers and the same school colors, navy, blue, and gold.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved, so the name will be Wicker School. Uh, the, the second item that was moved from the, uh, uh, from the consent to the, uh, the, the attorney's, uh, board contract, so... Ms., Ms. Womack, want your discussion.
Well, first I'd like to clarify that a consent agenda is, is not normally something that you put a contract in, as particularly one for this dollar amount. Uh, that being said, uh, my concerns with this particular contract is, have we had the same contract? And for how many years? Just because we've done the same thing for so many years doesn't mean that's the way it's supposed to always be done. There were key elements that were missing from the contract. Uh, we had the term of the contract. We didn't have a termination clause. The duties are not clearly spelled out for our legal advice. The Board has no idea how many other additional attorneys we have used throughout the years. We've not been given a dollar amount of how many man-hours he's used as far as going to bond forfeitures. When you go to a bond forfeiture, that money, as you well know, goes to the school. My question for almost two years has been, how many man-hours were put in to go into the bond hearings? And how much money was provided to the school? And in light of recent events and finding it out about a lawsuit that went on for over a year that our school board attorney did not tell us, maybe that's not one of his duties. That's why I suggest that we go over this contract and have it spelled out. Along with that, there's a proof of liability insurance, which is very significant, that belongs in the contract, and I could not find that anywhere. My suggestion would be that we move this until we have our retreat, so we can sit down and talk about it and go over the distinct duties and roles of our school board attorney, sir.
Do we have, uh, uh, this, you know, the, this is, uh, this is just an extension. Is it a new contract, Mr. Love? Is it a new contract for you or was it an extension?
The money is same, it's the same amount each month, and for the bond, and I wish this month I had 30, 30 bonds that I had to work with. And I keep a record of every bond, so I know, and it's turned in with my statement each month, the number of bond matters I handle.
Yes, sir. So in research before I did this, sir, just so you're completely aware, I spent several hours on this, uh, going, looking at other schools and their contracts. And there's certain things that they do that are a little bit different than the way our school does it as well. When we have a school board attorney, there is no issue whatsoever. It's great that you keep records, but the Board should be informed each month how much money is being spent. It's up to $168,000. My question would be, how much money have we spent on additional attorneys? For instance, the one about the exceptional child, how many man-hours was put in for that? Or the other two that might be possibly pending? And we can discuss this in open session. As a matter of fact, by law, we must discuss it in an open session. So, that being said, all I'm asking is for clarification within your contract. Just because we've had this written contract for 10, 20 years, however long you guys have been here, it still does not meet what we need as far as Board members. Any new Board member coming on board should be able to look and say, "These are the responsibilities and duties of a school board attorney." I would like to know if a citizen asked me, point blank, "Why did you not know about a lawsuit that occurred a year ago? Why did your attorney not tell you?" I would like to be able to say, "That's not in his job description," because there's not a valid job description here, sir. And that's my opinion, and this is the Board discussing the contract.
Ms. Womack, uh, you are, you are, uh, from, from now, everybody, uh, will have three minutes. So I can respond. Mr. Womack, I miss out, uh, love.
I, I have been the, the school board attorney since the, the, uh, uh, schools merged, there's the Lee County System and the Sanford City System. Been a long time. I've been the attorney since that inception. The fees of my, uh, payment has always been set by the Board of Education. It's no different now. Uh, when, uh, when, when Mr. Tatum became Chairman of the Board several years ago, the Board asked me to spend time in the building and about a half a day in the building. I really spend more time now in the build- building than I did then. But, uh, the, took the, two things that she raises, has raised is, uh, uh, I, I count every month for the number of bond hearings I have. And, uh, that's, that's about a public record. The, the law, the statutes require the s- school board attorney to handle the bond matters. So, uh, if, if you don't want me to handle the bond matters, then of course, get the General Assembly to change it. Uh, the second thing is, uh, I've been attorney since, as I say, since the, uh, schools merged, which has been a number of years, and I don't know of any, any time that I have given the school board bad advice or advice which costs them money. Now, the issue that you raised about outside attorneys, I don't have anything to do with that. I don't hire outside attorneys. That's up to the school board and the superintendent. The statutes give the superintendent authority to hire outside counsel. And for many years, I was involved in the, uh, exceptional children's program and in those matters, but at some point, it became so, uh, professional, uh, you had to have a specialized people, the lawyers, to handle those type cases, because that could amount to millions of dollars if you lose one of them. And so the school board made the decision, I didn't make it, the school board made the decision to hire outside counsel. And, and of course, they did, and, and they've been, as far as I know, have been successful. Uh, I don't know of any time we've ever got hit with a large amount, uh, uh, judgment and a large amount. But the one thing that you talked about, uh, about me not knowing about this lease, this EC case, it just was, that, that's not what I told you. I told you I made no appearance in that case. I didn't go in the file because of FERPA. I don't, I'm not supposed to know anything about that case. Once they hire outside counsel, I'm out of the picture. I did not go in the, the room. I saw the people coming and going. I knew nothing about the facts of the case, and when I found out about the case is when the grandmother, who was participating in the case, sent copies of the decision to all of you, which in my opinion violated the FERPA law. But that's, that's not for me to decide. And, uh, so, you know, that's, that's the story. I don't know of anything that I have done or haven't done that has cost this Board any money or any embarrassment. And I, as far as I'm concerned, if that were the case, I wouldn't be here anyway.
Okay.
And now, the, the contract you have before you i- is exactly like the one I've had for the last 10 years, uh, as, as far as the money is concerned. So, uh, I mean, I don't know what your point is, but I will be glad to try to answer your questions.
Sir, I'm not saying that you did anything wrong. I'm saying I would like for the contract to, to be, to have more... I would like to have it, have it, where we elaborate more on some of the key issues that are standard for a school board attorney's contract. And there was 13 that was provided, and, uh, they're not in our contract. For instance, like the proof of liability, the ones that I discussed before, the proof of liability, the termination clause, the duties that fall outside of it, those are normally spelled out within a contract. And all I'm asking here is for the Board to wait and do this when we have our retreat, which is this month, so we can go over some of the suggestions that has been given from other or, not any other organization, but other schools, and what is more effective on how the wording is done. There's even a, a part where you put, there's an annual evaluation. Just, that's a great idea. We do an annual evaluation of our superintendent. I don't necessarily agree with the way they do it at DPI, 'cause I, I just don't think that's appropriate, but there's something that you actually, it makes us be accountable to the public.
Ms., Ms. Womack, I have to stop you because you can't take all, all the time. We have some other issues. Uh, if you have a, a motion, you would discuss this, answer your question. Do you have anything further? You can't, we can't just use this place to grandstand.
No, I don't have anything.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would like to enter this. Mr. Love has done a superb job representing this Board, and I think, uh, every school board in this, in this state, uh, probably is unique in its relationship and its contract with its, with its, uh, attorney. And, uh, this, this, uh, represents no changes in duties or compensation for the, for the, uh, our, our attorney, and I would recommend that we go ahead, proceed and approve this contract as presented.
And I will also say, uh, with all that Ms. Womack is saying, there is a establishment, uh, uh, clause in the state law about school attorney, and the school system is following that. Mr. Love, Mr. Love, is that true?
Well, the, the, the point is that I serve at the pleasure of this Board.
Yes.
The Board can fire me tonight, they can fire me next week, they can fire me the, the day after. So, uh, again, Ms. Womack has overlooked that part of the statute.
Okay, so, yes, you serve at the pleasure of the Board. Everybody, every staff serve at the pleasure of the Board. So, at this time, uh, I want to recognize, uh, Dr. Smee. Are you making a motion or what are you doing that we approve that?
The motion is on the floor, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. You have a motion? We need a second?
Which motion is on the floor?
Which, which motion are you talking about? Your motion?
To... Because it comes under the consent agenda before. In that case, uh, I will enter a motion that we, uh, approve this contract as presented.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Uh, all in favor, say, say, raise your hand if you're in favor of Mr. Love. Okay. We are, we have a...
Actually, Mark, your wording should have said, point of order, your wording should have said "in favor of the motion, not of Mr. Love." I'm in favor of Mr. Love. Make that very clear.
Sorry, it's a slip of tongue. It's okay, Ms., Ms., Ms. Womack. Thank you, my teacher, okay? At this time, uh, if you're in favor of the motion, uh, the motion is approved already. Uh, four people are in support of, uh, that. If you oppose to Mr. Love, continue as our attorney, raise your hand.
No, I'm opposed to the contract. Again, it's the wording of what you're stating. I'm opposed to this contract.
Mr. Love is the attorney. If you're opposed to Mr. Love, continue as the attorney of the, of the school board, of, for his contract. So you already raised your hand. It's, uh, uh, the motion is approved. Mr. Love continues as, uh, the attorney for the school board. At this time, we'll go to closed session. I need a motion to go to closed session.
Mr. Chair, I move that Lee County Board of Education go into closed session for the following purposes: to discuss information that is privileged, confidential, and not a public record under North Carolina General Statute Section 143, 318 dot 11A1, and to consult with our attorney in order to preserve attorney-client privilege under the North Carolina General Statute Section 143, 318 dot 11A3.
Thank you. Uh, need a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We remain in closed session. We need a motion to come out of closed session.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion. We...
Mr. Chair, I make a motion. We resume open session.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we're in open session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're in open session at this time. Uh, we have, um, action items that we have to deal with.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion. We approve the personnel report as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion. We approve the one-year contracts as presented in personnel as well.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. We need a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
The motion is, at the, the Board of Education meeting today is adjourned. Thank you.